He's crying, he's like five months.
As soon as they figure out what's going on. Okay. It's a little scary. Mm-hmm. The sky from school perception, this should be on by then. It's gonna be about six or seven minutes. Okay, so if we result, she'll be ready to go. Okay, at 6:00 PM, I'll call our meeting order, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, roll call, please, Chris.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Bembo?
Here.
Mr. Inda?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. St. Mike's?
Here.
Next item on our agenda is comments from citizens and delegations. Do we have anything tonight? Okay, we do have listed tonight that we have our WASB Business Honorable Awards recipients, and they're not here yet, so if they are able to make it, we can jump back into that later. That takes us to our school showcase from River Cities High School. Welcome.
Good evening. So many people here. We are River Cities High School. We were asked to come here. Steve said, keep it short, highlight one thing, and so we promised we'll keep it short, but right now, we decided, because it's December, last year, we started a program called Beefember. We ended up getting a grant from the Wisconsin Beef Council for $150 beef and UW Extension. UW Extension, our backup, comes in every month, and food-wise and the financial piece, I can't remember that band's actual title right now, but we switch our groups. So Hannah and Laura Huber do things on cooking, grocery shopping, planning meals, all that kind of stuff, any, all the real-life skills, and then we practice things and put it into real, real skills. Talk about nutrition, you know, things like that. Yep, everything under the sun with, with all sorts of things. We'll take students grocery shopping, she'll do additional cooking classes with students, things like that. So, we, after getting this grant last year, we were able to get it again this year, and this week is actually, we are celebrating Beefember. Marty loves to make shirts, so of course, we had matching number shirts.
Thank you.
Tim, did you twirl?
I did twirl.
Couple of things that we do are, we, we talk a lot about different types of cuts, the cost of how to shop and save money buying beef. That can be anything from, like, fat content. So, we've talked about and showed them, the kids learned and saw how different higher-fat content in ground beef will make less in the end, things like that. It's just, it's really cool. They do an amazing job. Great with our students. Our students just buy in 100% with this, with Beefember specifically, but all of the different cooking things that UW Extension brings to us, and then we follow through additional things. So, last year, we did, we made sliders and beef stroganoff on one day, and then they came back another time and then showed them how to slow roast, slow roast beef. And did that, that's all the safety stuff, so that, all the students over here doing the sliders, they had to take the temperature, decide if it was done yet, cooking, the kitchen safety, cooking safety, all the things with any foodborne illnesses. Hannah really hits that hard. In fact, before Thanksgiving, they came in and did a whole thing on preparing a Thanksgiving meal for family and friends. So, things that, I mean, I know I would have never learned that. We all had to figure it out. It, it was just super cool. So, they were able to learn all the different things you can do when you're inviting family and friends to your house, including if you're invited to someone else's house, always bring something, or chip in and do the dishes, things like that. So, some skills that not all of our students in our district necessarily get. So, that was last year. This year, we are doing steak bites. The kids got to pick what they wanted. We're doing steak bites, so Pick 'n Save had this huge deal, so we got some top sirloin, so they'll make that, garlic butter steak bites they're doing, and then breakfast burritos. So, that is on Wednesday, so we can't have a snow day. Well, we do have a backup plan, but we prefer not to have a snow day, please, because kids are super excited to come in and cook and eat and learn about all the good stuff that goes into beef. Tomorrow, we're doing some prep lessons, and then we'll follow up and do some different things in the next week or two before Christmas.
Kind of cool is we're gonna watch some videos on, like, some beef cattle razors, you know, like ranchers.
Ranches in Wisconsin. So, so, the Wisconsin Beef Council provides tons of information. There's videos and all sorts of things that they do, quizzes, all sorts of neat things they do. So, we don't have to invent anything. It's all there for us, and I can, I actually am impressed about how far $150 goes. That's it. I know I was kinda, you know, I'm not used to not talking long. All right, any other questions?
Saying that's real-life skills that people use every day, that sometimes we kinda take for granted as our kids grow up, you think that you just learn it by watching, and it's not always the case, so.
Yeah, we've had students that have never cut vegetables before, and yeah, it's, it's pretty neat.
I mean, every time UW comes in, we learn something new. I mean, it's, it's amazing, like, what they teach.
And the really neat thing is just hearing the students have conversations, because you kinda hear where those students are coming from, like, what's their backstory a little bit? And so, you know, you get to know them a little bit on a, a little bit more of a personal level to find out, like, Thanksgiving, they all collaborated, worked together, made a really good Thanksgiving meal before the break, and some of the students might not have otherwise had a Thanksgiving meal, but they were excited to participate and eat together, and so.
And the kids made it. Kids made it home. Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
And juniors from last year are pretty excited this is coming up again, because they get to see it as a senior, so they're, they're really pumped for it.
Very awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're one of the few that did not, that wants to.
We do have a backup plan.
All right.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to add that I was in there for a day doing the mock interviews with students, and these students are phenomenal. You know, they all have their little quirks. I mean, the one girl I interviewed with, she said, "I have anxiety for speech and for talking to people." And I said, "Well, you hide it very well, because I didn't see it." So, they, they know what they wanna do, they just gotta figure out, and then, and then, most of them, I told them, I said, "Well, the first thing you gotta do is get that grad, graduate. You get that, that degree that you graduated high school, you can do whatever you want." So, I mean, it was very impressive listening to them. You know, some of them were not, not sure of themselves, but others, you know, were very sure of themselves and very professionally approaching things, and I didn't quite expect all of that. I didn't, I thought some of them would be just afraid and not, not know what to say and not, not know how to sell themselves. And basically, I just told them at the end, "You're selling yourself, so make sure you paint a good picture." That was very good.
Thank you for doing that.
Do that anytime.
Happy you were there as well. We appreciate you spending the time to help us out with that concept.
It's fun. Don't be afraid to ask.
I come and cook.
I come and eat.
Okay, well, then we will. Hello.
I'm over here.
Okay, we'd like to invite Todd and Jessica to come forward, which they have. We're honored to recognize Wisconsin River Orthopedics as a recipient of the 2025 Wisconsin Association of School Board's Business Honor Roll for your longstanding and generous support of Lincoln High School. For more than 20 years, Wisconsin River Orthopedics has been the title sponsor of our Sports and Entertainment Marketing Students Sportainment Night Charity Event. This event is a cornerstone project for our students who develop professional sponsorship contracts, secure local sponsors, and present their proposals to business owners. Dr. Dooman, you have played an active role in this process, offering valuable feedback and guidance that strengthens students' communication skills and prepares them for future careers. Thanks to the generosity of Wisconsin River Orthopedics, Sportainment Night has raised over $100,000 for local charities, while providing our marketing and business students with hands-on experience in business, marketing, sales, and event management. Your commitment has made a meaningful impact on our community and has been instrumental in preparing students for success in their future careers. On behalf of Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools, I'm honored to recognize and celebrate Wisconsin River Orthopedics for being such a remarkable partner. And I'd like to present you with the 2025 Wisconsin Business Honor Roll. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. No, I, I actually, Sportainment, I just kinda hit near and dear to my heart. We've done everything from basketballs to giveaways, and obviously, we also a huge part of the sports world as far as orthopedics, but it's a great, it's a great, basically, tool to teach the kids. I think there was one time, the young man just emailed me, just said, basically, "Can we have the money?" for lack of a better word. And I said, I just said, "Absolutely not." Anyway, so, so it was a great learning experience, because you learned how to ask for the dollars and how to actually put together a proposal, or it's just not given to you, because that was the year prior. And obviously, with the guidance of Business School and stuff like that, that guy, it worked out well. And obviously, we continue to support it, and whether that be the girls' basketball program in the summer and things like that, where the coach does a great job, and we do the giveaways and things like that. It's been great. You know, fantastic school, fantastic work, fantastic kind of foundation for the kids, and we're happy just to be a part of it. And we'll be here forever. I mean, we, well, hopefully forever. We've been here for over 40 years, and we are committed to the community. We are the only orthopedic surgeons that actually live and reside in this community, and we're here to give back, as just as you always give to us. And we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to take care of it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait a second, I'll go this way.
One, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Enjoy the meeting.
I don't imagine a good golf course in Congress.
Hey, thank you very much. Yes. I think the shameless plug, I wasn't gonna do it, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next we can move on to our student representatives' report. Abigail, thank you.
So, term one ended on November 25th, and students enjoyed their break that followed. And then, term two began on December 1st. Skills USA recently went to Marshfield and competed against many other schools in Wisconsin. We had two students place first and second in carpentry, and a team in engineering placed first. FCC LA and Knitting Crochet Club donated handmade hats to people in the hospital. Season of Sharing started last week, which gives an opportunity for students and advisors to donate money to help provide holiday gifts for Lincoln High School students whose families are facing financial hardship. And on Saturday, we had lots of sporting events going on at Lincoln. We had a boys varsity swim and dive invite, a varsity gymnastics invitational, and a boys varsity hockey game. Yesterday, the Lincoln High School band performed in Hawaii at the Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade, which is super cool. And for upcoming events, we have an orchestra holiday concert that will take place on December 15th.
Sounds like a busy time.
And if you get a chance, the, our performance at the Pearl Harbor Parade, we posted on our social media this afternoon, so. Oh, not yet?
We're waiting for pictures.
Oh, okay. It will be posted. I thought it was going out this afternoon, so it will be posted. We're just, we'll be able to see that tomorrow on our social media.
All right. Thank you for the report, Abigail. Now, we can move on to approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of November 10th, the special closed Board of Education meeting minutes of November 10th, two meetings on November 10th, the special closed Board of Education meeting of November 24th, and the special open and closed board meeting of November 24th, 2025, be approved.
We have a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of November 10th, the special, two special closed board meetings on November 10th, special closed board meeting on November 24th, and special open and closed board meeting minutes of November 24th. All those 2025, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
What was, motion carries, those minutes are approved. When the committee reports, Ed Services, Kathy.
Thanks, John. The Ed Services Committee met on December 1st of 2025. The meeting was called to order at 6 o'clock PM. There was one public comment. Paula Reeves, Lincoln High School Social Studies Department Chair and Teacher, expressed concerns regarding the potential purchase of Mastery Connect for the district. She noted that the program had not been piloted by WRPS teachers, which has traditionally been the district's practice. Ms. Reeves shared that teachers are already feeling overwhelmed by the number of programs currently in use, and the addition of another platform may add to their responsibility. She indicated implementing this program would require teachers to spend more time learning a new system and analyzing data, rather than focusing on building relationships with students. And there were three, I mistakenly stated there were three actionable items at the Ed Services meeting. Actually, there are only two actionable items. The Mastery Connect should not be on the consent agenda. So, with that, the first actionable item is modification to school board policy 5460 graduation requirements. Roxanne Filts, our Director of Teaching and Learning, stated that modifications have been made on policy 5460. The policy wording now specifies the number of credits students must earn in grades nine through 12 and outline the specific graduation requirements. For middle school students taking high school courses, parents may choose whether the student receives high school credit. The policy language was also updated to replace eighth grade with middle school student for clarity. Superintendent Ron Rasmussen noted that eighth grade was referenced two additional times and should be updated to middle school for consistency. A board member inquired about the next steps for determining which courses will be offered to middle school students for potential high school credit. Ms. Filts explained that the proposed courses will be first reviewed by the council for instructional improvement before being submitted to the board for approval. And the committee recommends, and I move, to approve the proposed modifications to school board policy 5460 graduation requirements. With the additional modifications mentioned, the motion carried unanimously. Or, I'm sorry, I was reading. I shouldn't have said the motion carried. It did carry unanimously, but nonetheless. The second consent agenda item is the BrainPop renewal. Ms. Filts explained that BrainPop has been used at the elementary and middle school levels for the past 10 years. The cost of the renewal is $25,555.50 to be paid from the Common School Funds Curriculum and Science Budget. And the committee recommended, and I move, to approve the one-year renewal of BrainPop for all the elementary schools and the middle school at a cost of $25,555.50 to be paid from a combination of Common School Funds, curriculum, and science budgets.
And we have a motion to approve ES1 and ES2. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. What was, motions carried.
Then the Mastery Connect purchase. Ms. Filts, along with other district leaders, presented information on the Mastery Connect program. She noted that the district had no intention of purchasing any programs until test score results were available. What we are using now is not working with scores consistently dropping. We need to find something that will show student mastery of essential standards. She also explained that the data provided by Mastery Connect is measurable, aligning with the key directive from the board when tasked with creating the strategic framework. A Mastery Connect informational meeting was held on November 18th, 2025, with curriculum chairs, principals, associate principals, and district coordinators. Out of the 22 leaders that attended, 18 chose to vote. Results are as followed. 52.9% supported the purchase but had program rollout concerns. 29.4% very interested and supported the purchase. 5.9% between very interested and hesitant, 5.9% between hesitant and do not support, 5.9% do not support. Concerns were raised regarding the inability to pilot the program. Ms. Filts explained that a pilot is not available, because setting up the program for the district requires significant preparation. However, the provider has offered access for the remainder of the school year at no cost if the district commits to a two-year agreement. Other concerns were also raised, including teachers feeling overwhelmed by technology programs versus time on instruction, that the program did not go through the CII, the cost, and given the potential referendum, and that the program was not used in Wisconsin, except in one district, and that district was unavailable to give us any information. Ashley Tesmer, Lincoln High School Associate Principal, presented the many assessments and question types that come with Mastery Connect. She explained how the data can provide information by specific groups or individuals to target supports that may be needed. Benchmark assessments are designed to mirror Wisconsin State testing. Teachers will be provided student learning information to be able to reteach the standards before students take tests. And several district, district leaders shared their feedback on Mastery Connect, noting that the program identifies areas where students are struggling and streamlines data collection. They indicated that Mastery Connect is a tool that supports progress in the right direction. The program also reduces the time teachers spend modifying questions to align with the forward exam. Another leader highlighted that the predictive assessment through Mastery Connect would provide middle school teachers with much-needed data on whether students are understanding the information that is presented on state tests. In addition, staff members present at the meeting were given the opportunity to share their input. Mr. Rasmussen explained that the district's decision to explore the Mastery Connect platform was driven by state assessment results, which indicate a need for improvement. Despite dedicated time learning during PLCs and professional development days, focus on strategies to meet state standards, student performance has not shown significant growth. He emphasized that if assessment scores were already at the desired level, there would be no need to consider Mastery Connect as a potential tool to support teachers and students in achieving better outcomes. And the committee did not approve the purchase of Mastery Connect.
I'd like to make a comment on this. After the meeting, I mean, I went, you know, again, I went back. I think we're making a mistake by not approving this purchase, and I hope maybe administration brings it back in a month or two, because the, the power of this program and the fact that it, it goes hand in hand with Canvas, and they can take a test that they already made in Canvas, put it into this program, and it will tell them if it meets the standards, whether they want state standards, ECT, forward, whatever it is. The other power of this program is, and I don't think our administration would have brought it forward if they didn't think it was important, but we are, we did task them in a strategic framework to come up with a plan to improve testing, and this is a tool that they found to do that. We've also got almost 80%, 53% said yes, 29% were, so if you put those two together, that's almost 80% of the people that said it would be a positive rather than a negative. The things that this can do is it can bring it down to a single student. So, we've never had a tool that can bring the capability of, of highlighting a student's deficiency and, and that type of thing. Like I said, it's fully integratable. One thing Kathy said about BrainPop, she, as we said, well, Ron had something about that, this is $25,000 for BrainPop, and she said, "Well, wow, we like that program." Well, when we bought BrainPop originally, did we know we liked it? Didn't. Didn't come to the board, because it was under $25,000 at the time, so it wasn't, didn't need approval. I'm sure it wasn't through CII.
It was, was through CII.
Okay. So, that might be, and maybe CII can take a look about it, and maybe it's important enough to have an emergency meeting for CII to look at it and see the capabilities, because this is out of technology budget, and we're gonna lose that budget end of this year. So, this isn't coming out of Fontaine, out of our main budget. It's coming out of the referendum technology budget, and it's a tool that, to me, we had a science department that's crying for this, because he spent, he sat up to four days making test questions, of which this program can make in five minutes. And we had another one, the math teacher, that said the same thing, where she's sitting there making these practices for the forward test, because they weigh the word forward test, you have to make them in a specific wording. So, there's people that can use this program. I think this program has capabilities that maybe some people are afraid of, or maybe they didn't quite understand it all. But when it fully integrates, and then I went back and looked at the people that have changed to it and, and use it, and unfortunately, they're not in our state, but when you go to the site and read what these people are saying, they're glad they changed. I think, I really think we are making a mistake as, as a board, because we, first of all, tasked them in the framework to do this. They found a tool to do it, and now we're telling them, "No, you can't use that tool." So, I would, I really would encourage us to look a little more, even, even as a board, maybe get a hands-on demonstration. I don't want, you know, I don't know why people vote to no, and I don't know, you know, and I don't, that doesn't matter, but I'm just thinking, in my head, as a board member, I think we're making a huge mistake by not approving this purchase. And I'd like us to readdress it in the future, after maybe CII or somebody else sees it. But I think it's worth the time and the effort, and the fact that several people in there say, when they, they were using Canvas and trying to do Canvas with some stuff, and they said, "I don't know why we didn't find this program along," because it, it's, I believe it's sold with the Canvas.
Yeah, it's part of the same company.
Part of the Canvas program, yes. So, that's my personal opinion, that we are asking our, our administration to do something, but we've actually, they found a tool, and we're actually saying no to that tool. I, I have angst about that. I think we need to let them have the tools they need, and the fact that this program is so robust and can bring it down to a student, and if they get that to where they can use it for elementary, oh my goodness, that's, that's gonna be a game changer for them people. And actually, the middle school, it sounds like the people at the middle school really like it, because it can help to find the deficiencies in the testing, or whatever it is that they need to improve their skills for the forward exam to be successful. So, I, I really hope we, as a board, look at this again and, and seriously study its ability, because I feel it has very good merits.
Can I just clarify one thing John said? In terms of the budget, the referendum money doesn't go away. We, we were spending referendum money long past the conclude, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, there's something changed in state law, but that, we don't have to finish that technology referendum money by a certain time.
Okay. Because of the increase in needs, a lot of it is getting spent as every year goes on. The current $2 million that were dedicated.
If it's not spent, it doesn't go.
Those are fund balances, it really goes there, but I think we're spending pretty much every, pretty much dollar of curriculum and technology currently. I will share that the, after the board committee action this week, many middle school people reached out to Roxy and myself, and the middle school is reviewing the program, I believe, next week itself through their PLCs and growth, and they really would like to consider it for the middle school. So, we have scheduled some time where the middle school will be meeting with them as well. And then, if the middle school is pretty adamant about bringing it forth, we will see it back in front of you, directed from the building perspective.
And that will go through a process.
Yeah, right now, it's, they're doing their PLCs and their WIC, their leadership team at the middle school.
Kathy, you're right. I was thinking of extra dollars. That, that goes, were going away.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, because sometimes, sometimes state law changes, and I don't know.
No.
I'm not sure that.
Yep. So, because it was not approved in committee but passed through as a consent agenda item, which is why it was pulled from your consent agenda item, there's no action tonight. It just dies right now at the, at the board level, and as I said, you may see it back in front of you from the building request.
So, there were four updates. The first one is the Innovation Mini Grant recipients for 2526. And Ms. Filts explained that three teachers were selected by the Quality Educator Committee to receive an Innovation Mini Grant, so congratulations to them. This is for 2526. Four grant applications were submitted, and the grant provides each recipient with $1,000 used for materials and supplies for the project, as well as $1,000 as a stipend, which gets paid in the spring after the building principal confirms the project was implemented. And the winners were Kim Akey from Mead Elementary. The project was called Math Thinking Classrooms. The project was called Math Thinking Classrooms. Terry Thomas, congratulations, Terry, our District 4K Coordinator. The project was called Feelings and Families: Bringing Tools Into Every Home. And Adam Klenowski from Lincoln High School. His project was called Precision Points For Future Makers. So again, congratulations to all of them. On the second update was the Act 20 Required Reading Training Update. Jen Wilhorn, our Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, shared that 5K through third grade teachers, reading teachers, EL teachers, and special education teachers will be finished with the Act 20 Required Reading Training requirement in the spring of 2026. Training has been provided through Cox Campus, which meets the eligibility criteria of accredited independent teacher training programs. Administrators are completing the training as well as additional literacy leadership training through CISA V. The staff have, will have completed 35 hours of training over two years before they're actually certified. So thanks to all of them for doing that. The full-day 4K possibility, Ron noted that he has received multiple calls from community members requesting a full-day 4K program within the district. He emphasized that such a program addresses a community need and is viewed by WRPS as a valuable tool for student retention. He asked Terry Thomas, District 4K Coordinator, and Kelly Schaefer, Washington Elementary Principal, to explore the possibilities and present their findings to the school board. Ms. Thomas and Ms. Schaefer shared information regarding a potential full-day 4K program. A survey was distributed to current 4K families to gauge interest. When asked if they would have enrolled their child in a full-day program if it had been available at WRPS, 64.8% responded, yes, definitely, and 18.7 indicated they would have considered it. Reasons included more beneficial for a full day, additional learning opportunities, and social-emotional development for students. Visits were made to other schools that offer a full-day 4K option. The team observed numerous benefits and heard from teachers that they prefer the full-day option over a half-day schedule. And I would just note that, Terry, you involved a team in this process, that it wasn't just you and Kelly. There were other 4K teachers, as well as community site Head Start and the Y were also, no, not the Y, Head Start and Building Blocks were involved.
Building Blocks and the CIA.
Oh, Building Blocks, as well as some people services staff members. Okay, but you had some conversations with Head Start or something? I remember their name coming up.
Yeah, I did meet with Head Start.
Okay, so you involved several.
But they just weren't having.
So several people were in a committee that were involved in this process, just to clarify. Okay. It's recommended that the WRPS pilot two full-day 4K programs beginning in the 2627 school year at Meade and Grant Elementary. These sites were selected based on available space, hot lunch capacity, and access to art, music, and physical education. The pilot program could be implemented without any additional staffing. And Mr. Rasmussen clarified, Mr. Rasmussen, Ron clarified that the state funding is six tenths FTE for 4K, whether it is full day or half day. He reiterated that this is a need in the community and will benefit children. And the meeting concluded with our WSAS and school report card presentation. Ms. Fields presented their school report card results and reviewed the key indicators used to measure the district's success. Several district leaders shared results for their respective schools and departments, highlighting current initiatives and outlining future plans aimed at driving continued improvement. It was a tremendous presentation by several staff members who worked very hard to put together information for us and let us know what they were concerned about, what was going well, and what they wanted to continue or start doing differently to improve where they're going. Future agenda items, next month, we will be looking at open enrollment space determination limits for the 2425 school year. And the meeting was adjourned at 9:02 PM, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 1st Educational Services Committee meeting.
We have a motion to approve the December 1st, 2025 Educational Service Committee meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oposed. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you for the report, Kathy.
John, before we move on, one of our delegate assembly motions is going to be involved with the state testing and reading the background on that. Multiple school districts are upset with the state and the whole, the whole delegate, or the question that the motion they're putting forward says that the state gets their, basically, the bottom line, stake is their act together and provides a testing framework that we can compare data from one year to the next because the last six years, we have not had one, nothing has stayed the same. So there is no physical way to actually match data to, like, if you wanted to see what they did in first grade to sixth grade, you can't because the data doesn't, none of it is the same test. So that's one of the delegate questions out there that we're going to talk about later on, but I just thought it was an important thing that we're not alone, and there's multiple school districts in the state that say the same thing, is that just give us the same test. And the same, you know, don't wait anything, just give us the test, let us test the students at the merit of what the students are. Not free and reduced, not this, not that, just give us a test with the same framework every year so that we can go forward and use the data to learn from it as opposed to struggle with it every year.
All right, next, we can move on to business services. John, you have the floor. Thank you for the report, Kathy.
Services, we had a meeting on December 1st. We called the meeting the order at 9:03. We had no public comment, and also, we had no actionable items. The highlight of our meeting is in donations. We had a donation for $130 from Michelle Anderson for Woodside Playground. We had an anonymous donor provide $5,901 for the Keeping Kids Warm program. That is an awesome donation. That's the, at this time of year, I mean, if you walked out this morning and you spent five minutes with bare skin, you were cold, very cold, and maybe even a little bit of frostbite going in. So thank you for that donor, and I know we can't send them a thank you, but I thank him now in the public. That is a phenomenal donation to our kids. And then we had a top-notch, top-notch stump grinding. They reduced their invoice by $150 and gave us a goodwill donation there. So with that, the meeting was adjourned at 9:04, and I submit the balance of the meeting minutes for approval.
You have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the December 1st Business Service Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oposed. Minutes are approved. Thank you for the report, John. Next, we can move on to Personnel Services, and Kathy will be giving that report tonight.
This one will be shorter, I promise. The Personnel Services Committee met on December 1st, 2025. The meeting was called to order at 9:03 PM, and there was no public comment. We had four actionable items. Does anyone want anything held out? So the committee recommends, and I move to approve the two professional staff appointments. The committee recommends, and I move to approve the nine support staff appointments. The committee recommends, and I move to approve the three support staff resignations. And the committee recommends, and I move to approve the one support staff retirement.
We have a motion to approve PS 1 through PS 4. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oposed. Motion carries.
And the meeting was adjourned at 9:06 PM, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 1st Personnel Services Committee meeting.
We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the Personal Service Committee of December 1st, 2025. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oposed. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you for the report, Kathy. Next, we can move on to agenda referrals and information requests. Does anybody have anything this month? Takes us to the legislative agenda. Troy, the floor is yours.
Perfect, thank you, John. So just a few things to look at out of the Senate and Assembly, which held floor sessions back in the week of November 17th. We'll look at a few takeaways out of those sessions, what headed to the governor's desk and what happened as a result of that. And so I'll pick up, the week of November 17th saw both the Senate and the Assembly, both chambers holding floor sessions. Both chambers voted on a number of education bills. Several of them were sent to the governor in the weeks after, which I'll talk about in a couple minutes. The bills headed to his desk include bills related to access to school buildings for federal youth organizations and military recruiters, changes to regulations for the academic excellence scholarship, allowing summer school programs to count toward requirements for student teaching, and requiring institutions of higher ed to collect and disseminate more data comparing student costs versus outcomes. So that was just a surface-level snapshot. Just to dive a little bit deeper on some of the bills, Senate Bill 10 passed the Assembly and passed the Senate, most recently passed the Assembly in October, and pertains to access to public high school for military recruiters. Senate Bill 11 passed the Assembly, most recently, and passed the Senate on a voice vote. Senate Bill 11 pertains to allowing representatives of certain federally chartered, chartered, excuse me, youth membership organizations to provide information to pupils on public school property. Senate Bill 210 recently passed the Senate on a voice vote and the Assembly on a voice vote, pertains to changes to amount of and criteria for designating recipients of academic excellence higher education scholarships. Senate Bill 424 passed the Assembly and the Senate on a voice vote, pertains to teacher prep programs. Assembly Bill, and we've talked about these in prior months, so that's why I'm not diving too deep, but Assembly Bill 74 passed the Senate and the Assembly on a voice vote, most recently, passed the Senate on November 18th. This pertains to parental modification of alleged misconduct by a school staff member, and amendments of that bill changed in a variety of ways. Our next bill, Assembly Bill 166, passed the Senate, most recently on a voice vote, pertains to academic and career planning services provided to pupils and requiring the reporting of certain data on college student costs and overall outcomes. And that takes us to governor action. So on December 5th, sorry about that. On December 5th, Governor Evers announced vetoes of nine of these bills, including Senate Bill 10 relating to access to public high schools for military recruiters. In general, federal law requires public high schools that receive federal funds to provide military recruiters the same access to high school students that is provided to post-secondary educational institutions or to prospective employers. This bill would have further required school boards to specifically allow military recruiters access to common areas in high schools and to allow access during a school day and to school sanctioned events. Without diving too deep into the governor's veto message, main takeaway is it was vetoed to object, excuse me, to undermining local decision-making regarding when military recruiters may access high schools. The next bill vetoed, Senate Bill 424, vetoed in its entirety, pertains to teacher prep Just some takeaways, this was vetoed, Governor Evers vetoed this bill to object to potentially reducing the duration and rigor of student teaching, which is a critically important part of ensuring our future educators have the qualifications and experience to educate, empower, and inspire our kids. And takeaways that if the legislator is interested in doing this work, he would welcome them to revisit any of the previous budget proposals and investments designated to achieve this goal, without reading the whole statement there. The next bill, Assembly Bill 166, was vetoed in its entirety. This bill requires UW system institutions, technical colleges, and private nonprofit colleges in Wisconsin to annually submit to the higher educational aid boards several categories of information relating to certain salaries, graduation information, popularity of programs, among other data. This bill was vetoed in its entirety. Governor Evers states he objects to burdening institutions of higher ed with additional administrative requirements, most especially when the legislature imposes mandates without providing the resources to implement those requirements. Further money of the mandated reporting as required under this bill, according to the UW system, overlaps substantially with existing information that is already available and submitted to federal government in his veto message. So now, that really puts a pin into any legislative action for the duration of the calendar year, any substantial legislative action with the governor's vetoes. And then the only other thing which we'll talk about later is the 2025 WASB resolution, so I'll put a pin in that later when we, when we vote and cover that business.
Thank you for the report, Troy. As always, very informative. Thank you. Next, we can move on to approval of the bills.
I'd make a motion to note the November 2025 receipts in the amount of $2,289,215.39 and to approve the November 2025 dispersments in the amount of $3,785,496.02.
We have a motion to note November 2025 receipts in the amount of $2,289,215.39 and to approve November 2025 dispersments in the amount of $3,785,496.02 be approved. We have a roll call, please, Chris.
Ms. St. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Ms. Seven Tins?
Yes.
Mr. Crings?
Yes.
Mr. Inda?
Yes.
Thank you, Chris. And that takes us into new business. First item, possible action on employee appointments, resignations, and retirement requests. Brian, all quiet on that front this month?
Quiet.
Perfect. All right, we can move on to update and discussion of the School Perceptions Community Survey results.
All right, so I'm excited to have Scott Gerard from School Perceptions with us this evening, virtually, so he's on the screen behind us. Scott will take us through the community survey results. Reminder, the district has worked with School Perceptions for many, many years using the school developmental, school board development tool. School Perceptions was used in 2020, prior to the referendum. At that time, in addition, the School Perceptions did the parent and staff survey that we did last spring, which we hope to continue moving in the future as well, so we create some longitudinal analysis of the district moving forth. And then the community survey, so at your tables is the presentation that Scott will have tonight, so you have something that you can take notes on as he goes through. Tonight, this is just to provide you information and then to discuss with Scott his expertise because they work in districts all across the Midwest, but specifically in Wisconsin. And so he is here to share the insights from his perspective, not only of our community survey, but also if you have questions related to work, how this looks compared to other districts that they're working with at this time as well. So Scott, are you ready to go?
I'm all ready. Can you hear me?
Is that volume all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we're good. I just need to get rid of.
There's a pop-up on our screen here, so. There you go, and I'm going to move you to full screen, so. All right, you should be good to go.
All right. All right, now are you seeing the report as well?
Yes.
Great. So thank you all for having me tonight. Here we are on December 8th. So this is a little background on the types of information you're going to see throughout the presentation. So with that blue icon, we've got background information. It'll look mostly familiar. Reminder of information that was presented to your community in the survey. We have survey and respondent information about who took your survey, course results and analysis, and then time at the end for wrap-up and questions. And as Ron said, a reminder of who we are at School Perceptions. We've been doing this work since 2002, and we've helped more than 1,300 school districts navigate the strategic planning and referendum planning process. So your survey had a November 24th deadline, so we're about two weeks out from that. We are at 2,276 respondents, so a lot of folks sending surveys in or filling it out online. That comes out to a 14.1% response rate, which is very solid into the teens. Feel good about that response rate. Given the number of responses, we have a 2.10% statistical margin of error. That's just based on the number of responses you have, and it's a good number to keep in mind as we go through the results today. Thirty-five percent of your respondents were 65-plus. That's, you know, an over-representation of their proportion in your whole community, but that's something we like to see. We're happy to see that number somewhat higher. Number one, they're the folks who are least directly connected to this school, and so it can often be the hardest to have a dialogue with them. And additionally, folks in that demographic tend to vote at higher proportions, and so if there were to be a referendum on the ballot, they're also likely to be overrepresented on Election Day. You had good representation from the three groups below that, 35 to 54, 45 to 54, and 55 to 64. And then at the bottom, those two groups are always the smallest surveys. I think I've seen something more than 1% in the 18 to 24 category, maybe one time on the 50-plus surveys I've done here with community surveys. So no surprises down there, and we're happy with this distribution. Ninety-three percent of your respondents have a primary residence in the district, which means they can vote there. You did have 6% who do not, and 1% who are not sure. We always have 1% to 2% who are not sure for whatever reason. That 6% is going to be either staff who live outside your boundaries, or perhaps open enrollment families. open enrollment families. Still want to hear from them, so they're represented in certain parts of the data tonight. But when we're looking at a potential referendum outcome, we need to just look at those folks who would be able to vote if something were on the ballot, so we look at just those folks with a primary residence in the district. Forty-five percent of your respondents live in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Twenty-seven percent live in the town of Grand Rapids. And then everyone else was in the single digits, but we did have at least one respondent from every municipality within your school district boundaries. Eighteen percent of your respondents are staff members in the district, and thirty-one percent are parents. That leaves the rest who are non-parents, non-staff, so both the largest group of your survey takers as well as the largest group in your community are non-parents, non-staff. We asked how folks would like to receive information from the district. Those non-parents, non-staff are represented by the purple bars here. So the top answer was forty-six percent of those respondents said a mailed newsletter. And in second place was the Wisconsin Rapids City Times. And I think what you're seeing there is folks, those non-parents, non-staff, like to hold something in their hands. That's a trend we're seeing across a lot of districts right now, is respondents increasingly favoring something physical they can hold as email inboxes get overtaken. Parents, on the other hand, sixty-one percent of your parent respondents like emails, so that was far and away the most liked way of receiving information for parents.
Scott, I'm going to interrupt just for a quick second. So in my time in the district, the district has never done a mailed newsletter to our communities, so that is something that we'll probably be looking at in the future based upon the survey results. Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, no problem. So this is a reminder of the financial challenges that were presented in the survey, so we explained some of the background there for the district. And we asked, would you support the district pursuing a replacement operational referendum? Your staff are represented in the dark blue there, so eighty-three percent of your staff respondents said yes, they would support that compared to five percent saying no. Your parents represented by the lighter blue, two-thirds, sixty-seven percent, said yes, they would support the district pursuing a replacement operational referendum compared to seventeen percent no. And finally, your non-parents, non-staff, forty-eight percent said yes, and this is where it's good to remember that margin of error, which is two point one percent. With that margin, you're basically at about fifty percent saying yes there compared to thirty-one percent saying no. So while the yeses don't quite surpass fifty percent for that group, they well outpace the nos. As a reminder, this question was asked with no numbers attached and no specific plan attached, so that is what comes next. So we then presented survey takers with three options. Option one would provide three and a half million dollars each year. Option two would provide four million dollars each year. And option three would provide four and a half million dollars each year. And we outlined some of the projects that would be completed at those different levels as well as the tax impact of those different options. We then asked, which operational referendum amount would you support? So how to read this slide is starting at the left, and we'll start with non-parents, non-staff at the top there. That dark green bar where it says thirty-six percent, that's the percentage of your non-parent, non-staff respondents that said they would support a four and a half million dollar operational referendum. As we move to the right and the colors change, we add, so in the non-parents, non-staff case, we add eleven percent to get to a total of forty-seven percent of non-parents, non-staff that would support a four million dollar referendum. Because as that cost decreases and the tax impact goes down, we tend to see that support stay continuous and continue as the cost goes down. So then we look at where that amount passes fifty percent. So within your non-parent, non-staff group, it passes fifty percent at three and a half million. For both your parents and your staff, it passes that fifty percent mark within the four and a half million dollar option, so at the highest level. So then what we have to do is take a look at what your population might look like on Election Day. So using some American Community Survey census data, about twenty-five percent of your population are going to be parents. And about seventy-five percent of your voting population are going to be non-parents, non-staff. So we have to weight the support that we just saw on that previous slide for those populations. So in the equation next to the four point five million, you see zero point two five. That represents the twenty-five percent of your community that are parents. We multiply that by the parent support for that dollar amount, fifty-six percent. We then do the same thing for your non-parents, non-staff with the zero point seven five multiplied by the thirty-six percent support. And that number on the right, forty-one point zero percent, is what we would predict for an election outcome if the election were held today. So obviously, that is below fifty percent and outside the margin of error. When we go to forty million and do that same equation?
Four million.
We get fifty-two and a half percent.
Four billion, Scott, four billion. Oh, I don't have a mic.
But it's about within the margin of error.
Turn the mic off, he's getting some feedback.
As we continue to go down at three and a half million, that support, that weighted support rises to sixty-two and a half percent. So well above fifty percent, outside that margin of error. And finally, a smaller referendum continues to climb with weighted support up to sixty-seven point three percent.
Any questions on?
We also asked, when there were cost-cutting options, you know, if the district did not get a referendum, what would folks want you to cut? Forty-five percent of your resident respondents said athletics and extracurriculars, thirty-five percent course offerings, and thirty-four percent said closed school buildings. Updates to technology also reached thirty percent, nothing else surpassed that. We also broke this down by those three subgroups, and so this is in that same order, but as you can see, there are some differences, and so your non-parents, non-staff, fifty percent said athletics and extracurriculars. When we go down, course offerings range from twenty-nine percent to thirty-eight percent. What stood out is closing school buildings and updates to technology delaying those updates. Those were the two highest for your staff respondents. So there were some differences among your subgroups here that I just think are worth noting and being aware of. The survey moved on to facility challenges. So we started by explaining some of the background that in 2021, voters approved the first phase of the long-term plan, and then we outlined some of the challenges that remain. Aging infrastructure, safety, security, and accessibility, and classrooms and support spaces. We then explained that while there will not be a capital referendum on the April 2026 ballot, there could be one on the November ballot if the operational referendum were to receive approval in April. And we then asked, should the district continue to explore a capital referendum to pay for the next phase of our facility plan? Seventy-six percent of staff respondents said yes compared to seven percent saying no, slightly below the earlier permission slip question. Parent respondents actually went slightly up from that earlier question with sixty-nine percent saying yes. And non-parents, non-staff, forty-nine percent saying yes here compared to forty-eight percent on the operational side. So all three groups, once again, either in a majority, if you look at staff or parents, or in a clear plurality if you're looking at non-parents, non-staff. How's the district doing in each of the following areas? So we asked a few overall satisfaction questions. And here, we break it down by those same subgroups we've been looking at. So what we look at, this is scored on a one to four scale, so if someone answered poor, it's scored as a one. If someone answered fair, it's scored as a two. If someone answered good, it's scored as a three. And if someone answers great, it's scored as a four. So the median that means is a two point five. You had two areas that are below that two point five among your non-parents, non-staff, but for both your staff and your parents, everything is above that median, which means it's closer to good than it is to poor. We look at this another way as well. This is just the percent who responded great or good for each area, and then that average score. As you can see, you do have a majority of your respondents saying good or great in all of these areas. And then three of the scores are above that median, two point five. Managing funds appropriately is right there, basically at that median. That score is almost always the lowest on our surveys because folks just got done taking a survey, potentially asking them for additional money, so they think, well, maybe you could manage a bit more appropriately. School finance is complicated, as we all know well. Finally, we asked on a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? Your overall score was a six point one five, so leaning likely compared to unlikely. The biggest group was neutral, twenty-eight percent. But we did see about thirty-six percent, so more than a third of your respondents in sort of those top three areas, eight, nine, and ten. And those folks tend to be really enthusiastic about sharing what they love about your district and how much they appreciate the work you all do. That is the end of the survey.
Questions for Scott?
Do you have any suggestions as to how we can reach more members of the community? I mean, I know that newsletters and personal mailings came up, but to me, that's kind of always been the major struggle is, you know, almost everybody pays taxes, and how do you get the information in their hands in a way? Heck, we sit in meetings every month, and we struggle to understand a lot of the school finance things. It's very complicated. So do you have any suggestions on ways we can educate the community, try to explain why we're asking for what we're asking for?
I think my best advice is meeting them where they're at. And so, you know, back to that mailed newsletter piece, I think we are more increasingly seeing folks who want that sort of outreach from districts, so it's not just a Wisconsin Rapids thing. And so I think meeting them where they're at because they're at home, they're going to read what they get there, whereas they may not have the time or take the time to come to a meeting. And so I do think just meeting folks where they're at is probably the best advice I have.
We are preparing a one-page summary of the survey results that we're going to publish on our social media that will be published this week, so we want, obviously, to keep people well informed of the survey. We don't just want to say the results are just left here. So we do want to inform people quickly what they are. Bridget is online. Bridget worked with us on developing the social media, encouraging people to complete the survey, social media reminders, et cetera, because we wanted as many people as possible to join us on the survey. We wanted everybody's opinion. In comparison to the 2020 survey, you saw thirty-five percent were over age sixty-five in this survey. In the 2020 survey, it was twenty-five percent, so that part of the population is ten percent higher. As Scott shared, generally, no's ranging between twenty-five to thirty-three percent on any survey. In 2020, the no's, I think, were twenty-six percent, just in comparison to the survey we saw tonight. So pretty consistent between 2020 and the 2025 survey results. The questions are different. The questions were slightly phrased differently, but generally, on the operating and the capital, if you boil it down, survey results were pretty consistent to the 2020, although the biggest difference was the number of people over sixty-five who completed the survey was ten percentage points higher than it was in 2020.
Scott, do we know how many were done online and how many were sent in?
I can get that answer for you in just a minute here. So we had, oh, where is it? We had about one thousand and, oh, that's an old one, sorry, that was last time. There we go. We had eight hundred and ninety-one that were done by paper, so about fourteen hundred done online, so about a little over a third done by paper, and a little under two-thirds done online.
And just to jump in and piggyback off of what Scott and Ron said to kind of answer your question about communications. Hi, Bridget Joyce, Myron Construction, but we're helping with some communications with the district. So know that we've been working behind the scenes with Ron and his team to not only communicate the survey, but looking forward to share the survey results and then continue sharing with your community in any way possible that you guys can dream up as a board or that Ron and the admin team have already shared. So social media, website content, posters and flyers, offering those community information sessions, we'll reach your people where they are, like Scott shared, and that's offering as many avenues for them to get information as possible is our number one goal.
And you may remember, we did host a listening session or a Malta survey at Lincoln early on in the survey, I think on the eleventh, that was Veterans Day. And we had almost fifty people attend, which was very good attendance compared to what generally people see. So we know people are interested, and we rely on people throughout the district as we continue down this process, not just at Lincoln, but in all the parts of our district that we want to attend.
Wondering if it wouldn't be a good idea to put some type of flyer together to get out to religious organizations, to get into our senior center, to even nursing homes, people that may not have as much access to get out, that we could get things to them that would maybe be an explanation, so a little bit more information if they go to vote.
As I said, if the board does pursue a resolution for referendum, if you have five people, I'll come and visit you. I don't care where it's going to be, if it's a bridge club, any social event, if you have five people, I'll come and visit you, no matter where you are throughout the district. Based upon the survey results, we will probably do also an article that will try to get published in the City Times as well as the Tribune, since that part was the second part was the City Times. With the holiday season, hopefully, it will get published in there before the holiday season, but we do want to try to keep as much information going as possible. And obviously, it'll be part of the news through WFHR that we record with them monthly as well.
I have a question. I love the page with the additional analysis, operational referendum support, that's extremely helpful. Is that something you can also do for the capital referendum with the data that you have there? Because that's all broken out, you know, by parents, staff, and non-parents, non-staff, just to kind of get that.
Sure. The reason we didn't initially do it and don't tend to with a question like this is because this wasn't asking about a specific dollar amount, so it's a little, there's not as much of a direct voting outcome that we're predicting, if that makes sense.
It does.
Certainly, we could, I could provide the overall support if based on the weighting, if that would be helpful, but it's a little different, and it's less of an electoral outcome that prediction than those other ones, just because there's not a specific dollar amount attached, if that makes sense.
It does, but that still would be helpful, just to sort of give us a general picture. Thank you.
And a reminder, that seventy million dollar figure was put in the survey, that would be at the maximum what I could really even support when we added up the tenure plan from, prepares every year, and then possible additional needs. It kind of came up to that dollar figure, but keep in mind, because of the good financial stewardship of the board and past administration, the district, and we do have an expiring operating referendum and energy exemptions, is we want to try to, if there is a tax impact, we want it to keep as minimal as possible throughout this entire process. So if an operating referendum was successful at one of those dollar figures and tax impacts, we would then look at, see what could be the capital with little or no tax impact to maintain the current levy as is. So there is that part of it. There's no doubt that if we have an operating referendum coming off the books, you know, after the school year, that two million, the average that, on the tax rules, on an average house is about, err, correct me, I think a hundred and nineteen dollars, which would be a reduction, but because of the state funding formula, if the tax levy went down, then the following year, we lose state aid, and we're sixty-five percent state-funded. So the following year, actually, taxes would jump approximately ninety dollars because we would then see a reduction in state aid. So there's a...
And we still have the levy for it.
Yeah, so there's this downside, one way or the other, of what that looks like. So this board and passports have tried to maintain a pretty consistent levy, and our levies decreased every single year. But we know that the impact upon certain municipalities in our community varies based upon when certain reassessments are done, when you do approve the final budget. And October, if a municipality reassesses and other municipalities in our district don't reassess, the equalized value varies for what various parts of the district are. So if you attended that community listening... So if you attended that community listening session, I shared eight random houses within the community, and you had three houses in the city of Wisconsin Rapids whose taxes between 2013 and 2023 had pretty much dropped. And then in 2023 to '24, two of their taxes went up. Their school tax part, a third house, their taxes actually went down through that timeframe based upon, and I don't know if they re-improved some of their houses and along those lines. So there's various impacts that will pertain, and we'll update that chart moving forth once I have public access to what the tax rules are for the 2025 year as well.
And also, you know, how do we educate the public? You know, the number-one cost-cutting option, athletics and extracurriculars, I think that that's always an easy target, but in reality, it's what, 1.9% of our budget?
Correct.
So it's a very, very small part of the monies that we spend, but I think it's just viewed as an extra, maybe. And, you know, the vast majority of the costs are the classroom, instruction, staff, and every business is your highest cost. So, I mean, that's our business, too. So...
I'm going back to what you were talking about with, you know, there could be a potential decrease this year, but the year after, it's going to jump. I think that that is really important, that we find a great way to explain that, that, you know, we're not just talking about next year, we are talking about that. I think the other thing the community needs to keep in mind is that WRPS is the largest employer in the city. And that's a huge impact. So I don't know. I think you do a really good job of explaining and communicating that, and I think that we need to do a good job of explaining that the best we can as well, just to try to explain that it's not just, we are talking about years here and that it will impact because of the way the funding works.
And that also feeds into a bigger picture of what would cause a business to come here that might employ people. And a big part of that is the quality, not only of the community, but the quality of the schools. So...
So my intent would be to, probably at the Monday committee meeting, call the special meeting for the board that night to discuss the survey results and any direction you want to give to administration moving forth with the financial picture at that time.
The other thing that you have to understand, as far as school finance, is unlike anything else in the world, you would never run a business the way school districts are face up, forced to operate. So it's actually a positive for a school district like ours with low loans and deficits, we de-feast the loans earlier. So it's a positive for a district like ours to pass a referendum because the following year, the state pays us back 65% of that money. So that happens nowhere else. And if any board member wants to really get thoroughly confused at the upcoming convention, do the state kind, the pre-session on state finance, because I did it my first year, and of course, we had Dan then, and Dan explained it to me in his words, but (laugh) which are completely different than the rest of the world. But that, you leave that session and go, oh, my gosh, how do they do this? And how is the funding formula, it's four pages of a spreadsheet that was done in 1985? Somewhere back during the 80s? And that's still the same sheet we're using today. So it, when they say the funding system is broken, it is, but that's all we got right now, is what they have from back in 1985, and that's what they're still using. And so the other thing of it is, is that if the school district, say, we levied at 50 million this year, and then next year, we levy at 48, we will never, ever, ever be able to again levy at 50 million. So that's why, when you do lose money, you still have to levy at the same amount, otherwise you will never get that money back. You lose it forever. So that's 101 finance, school of finance, which is...
School finance does not operate how any of us around the table attempt to operate our own financial budgets at home. It is extremely difficult, and as John kind of explained in school financing, because we are a state-aided district, you look for debt. Just by the example, as I said, you'll, taxes will go down, but because of what the financing is, is you'll go up. And the state gives a certain dollar figure. So if the state's not giving the money here, it's going to go to some other district around the state as well. So I would ask that we probably have a special meeting that, that committee night to further explore the survey results and discuss direction for the district in the future.
Makes sense.
Do you have any other questions for Scott before I let him go?
No. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. I did do a quick weighted calculation, by the way, and it comes out to 54% on the facilities piece.
54% are, would be S's. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And thank you all very much for your time tonight. Have a great evening.
You as well. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Moving on to approval of annual school finance event drill report submitted by each building principal for drills conducted in accordance with Wisconsin statute 118.07, parents for and CP.
Those are in your packets tonight. This is an annual requirement by state statute that we provide you the violence drills and preparedness drills that were conducted within the buildings. Every three years, we have to do the crisis plan, and last year, you did approve the crisis plan. So that's at every three-year occurrence. Tonight was just an update for you, so you are well aware as board members that we are doing drills and analyzing how the drills go and making changes to building operations based upon those drills. Some of it is more confidential because there is parts of what we do that is not known by the public.
Correct.
I would make a motion to approve the annual school violence event drill report submitted by each building principal for drills conducted in accordance with Wisconsin statute 118.07 sub 4, sub CP.
We have a motion to approve of the annual school violence event drill report submitted by each building principal for drills conducted in accordance with Wisconsin statute 118.07, parents for and CP. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is full-day 4K discussion.
So last week during Ed Services, Terry Thomas presented survey results that of a full-day 4K option for parents and rationale, and the visits of what she and others did to Bearview, and recommendations of us moving forward. We're well aware that other districts around us are looking at full-day 4K as well. We would like to pilot full-day 4K, as explained last week during the Ed Services presentation, in two buildings moving forth of being MEED and Grant because of space availability and encore availability, we believe, for next school year. Terry is present tonight. If you have any further questions, it would be related to probably the MEED area, would be the MEED and Think boundary areas, and then Grant would be the Grant and Washington boundary areas as we pilot. And then we would look at, any additionals would kind of act like a border exemption that we use if they would want to attend a full-day 4K that we do in other areas. So we would like to move forward, a motion from you to pilot in those two areas and then define exactly what the, how that process will look moving forth.
What's the max number of students? Do you know, or is that...
The max would be probably 20. Would be max in each classroom, so 40.
Okay. At each school, or 40 total?
40 total. We're looking at one classroom in each building.
And that would be with at least a teacher, at least one aide, right? A teacher and at least one aide, just like your staff would know?
Correct.
I think this is wonderful. It's a huge need in our community. I love the idea that we're going to pilot it. I think we're going to see good feedback and then have some good information and data for us.
We have excited staff that want to move forward and pilot it.
Because we may get some, if we go to full-day, full-day 4K in all our buildings, we may get enrollment coming in.
I agree. I think it's great. I just have a couple of questions. You said something about not probably hiring additional teachers. How would that work at MEED because they don't have a 4K right now?
Terry, you want to kind of share, because right now, we are, because we had anticipated, our normal 4Ks are about 280 students, 279, I think. We came in under that number this current year. So we believe if the numbers stay consistent where it is this year, we would move that staff that is there for half-day right now into that full day. Terry, in her role, probably be a little bit, she's kind of the 4K coordinator, so she's doing site visits this year into our off-campus sites that previously was done by another staff member, so there's some time there as well, because one of the staff members right now is assisting us with our larger class size out at Think, which would, is not going to be there next year, that fifth-grade classroom. We have some extra assistance given out at Think from a person who's involved in 4K right now. So that MEED will not be there next year, I think, either.
Okay. I'm sorry, I lost you.
So, Kathy, the staffing is, would still be determined, but what we'd be looking at, so we have a teacher at Grant that is excited to do it at Grant. And then we also have other WRPS-employed 4K teachers. We have two of them at Pitch, we have one at Woodside and one at Think Academy. And so it would be one of those teachers that would be going over to MEED.
So we'd be probably dropping a half-day program somewhere else, then?
Possibly, but we also have the 4K position at Think Academy that right now has a flexible half-day.
That's what you were talking about.
Right. And so until we see...
I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, that's good.
It's really confusing because there's a lot of moving parts, but until we see those registration numbers, it's really hard to know where we need the people based on registration.
And then, once the pilot, or as the pilot is going on, what will the process be to determine if you make a recommendation to actually do it? So who's going to be involved and all that kind of thing before it comes to us?
So obviously, Terry's team, the current committee, will be part of that, that feedback process, and the staff, obviously, that's involved in teaching that full-day 4K. And then our financial situation at that time, as well as, if we're going to add something, what are we looking at that may have to give up based upon the survey results tonight? So we're going to have to balance that moving forth. And as Aaron says, we're always legislative action away from what state funding looks like.
Right.
And currently, 4K is .6 FTE-funded. There are people that we don't know that are advocating at the capital for a 1 FTE at 4K, so we just don't know what will happen into the future as we move into another election season.
The other thing we got to advocate for is that we were promised 42% at special ed, and we're getting 36 or 35?
Right now, 35. We're budgeting 37, so...
So dropping your legislator a note asking what happened to the 42. I know WEAAC had sent something out, my wife still gets some of that, but I don't know if Wasbe was talking about it at all.
Other questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the implementation of a pilot full-day 4K program beginning with the 2026-27 school year.
We have a motion to approve the implementation of a pilot full-day 4K program beginning with the 2026-27 school year. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Last thing on our agenda is the discussion and possible action on the 2026 Wisconsin Association of School Board Resolution.
I'll just roll out, did anybody look at the resolutions? Because the number two is the one dealing with the state testing, which I think is very important, that we advocate for that, so that they can get it consistent and fair because the way it's done right now isn't fair. It hasn't been fair for the last six years. But in the fact that you count zero, you know, if a parent opts out, that should not count, because that means that parent decided their child doesn't count. You don't hold that against the school district and count it as a zero, because that doesn't give you, you know, it's not a huge number, but it still skews the numbers. So that, other districts had made that comment, too. I read in some of the notes. But the question that I have, or the two questions, and I don't, I can't understand how they came out of, out of the legislative or the Wasbe committees, 10 and 11, decoupling schools. I don't know, anybody has any thoughts on that for me? Those are the two that are really puzzling.
We do not want it to be coupled, or at least I don't.
No, I don't want it to be coupled either. But in that, that then puts it back on the state because they, the decoupling people referenced, both Florida and Arizona, that did that, and they didn't have any idea what it was, the impact was, because they, you know, and that's why, you know, that then with the transparency, see, the show that, I don't think the public understands that our district is paying three...
4.6 million.
4.6, yeah, I was going to say, it was three and a half, two years ago. Now it's 4.6 million off the bottom line for the charter schools, of which the funding, you know, if they want to run a two-tracks education system, you have to have funding for two tracks. And we don't currently have funding for two tracks. They're still trying to fund a two-track system out of a one-track funding. And that's what the decoupling part of it is. But I don't understand the next question then about the coupling, because to me, they contradict each other. So I don't know how that discussion's going to go in the delegate assembly.
I think they do contradict each other. It's like, I think that, don't you think it's a committee or whatever, I forget the name of the committee that oversees these, the resolutions committee?
Resolutions committee.
I think they, I think they just put both of them out there to appease.
But you don't send that out to the delegate assembly if you don't have a clear-cut answer to yes or no, because they're...
Last year, it was pretty clear, Troy was there with me in the assembly, that people voted, it was just the one, and it was a couple, and people voted against it. I don't remember, though, what the results of that vote was, if it was very...
I see what you're saying, John. When I read it, it was almost like, what if you approve both of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're contradictory. So it just didn't really make a lot of sense.
That's what I'm trying to say, is how did that get out of committee when it's so contradictory? Because normally, they don't do that. This is the first, in my 16 years, this will be my 16th year, I think, going down here, I've never seen this on a, come out of the delegate committees. So that's the only one I had a puzzle with. Well, the rest of them are pretty straightforward.
Doesn't seem to be anywhere near as many as there used to be.
No, they used, well, that's, that one year, they had to have, they tried to do 20, and that was a year that we didn't finish, because they ended up losing quorum, and we didn't get six questions done. But that's the year they also had a, one single question where they had six amendments, and then amendments to amendment. That one question took almost an hour in the assembly, and it's, so they've peeled that back to say that, you know, we're not changing, you know, and it was all verbiage. They wanted to change A from a "the," for all from, you know, non, you know, single words they were trying to change in these resolutions. So they've kind of said, no, we're not, that's not the purpose. These are general, these aren't laws, these are general concepts. We got to vote on them as general concepts. So that was the only one, 10 and 11, just, I couldn't figure out how they got on there to begin with, but I will vote my conscience for the group.
Maybe somebody should make that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve having John Bembry use his own discretion and vote his conscience on behalf of the board on proposed Wisconsin Association of School Boards resolutions when participating as the board delegate at the upcoming delegate assembly meeting in January 2026.
We have a motion to approve to have John Bembry use his own discretion and vote his conscience on behalf of the board on proposed Wisconsin Association of School Boards resolutions when participating as the board delegate at the upcoming delegate assembly meeting in January 2026. Everybody in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, John. Thank you again for doing that. Looking at the calendar, on Wednesday, we have a wellness committee meeting in the afternoon. On Sunday, the 21st, we're all invited to the community concert at 2:00 PM at the PAC, at which time we'll be awarding the front of education. Winter break from December 24th to January 2nd, so there'll be a bunch of disappointed kids that they don't get to go to school for a couple of weeks. Board committee meetings on January 5th and January 6th is the deadline file to appear on the spring election. 12th is our regular board of education meeting. 19th is the professional development day. The state education convention in Milwaukee is the 20th to the 23rd, and also on the 23rd is our WRPS education update on the Rapids Report on WFHR radio. So with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
I have to collect these?